Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Town Hall on our proposed 2019-2020 City of La Mark annual budget. When I first got here, staff had already started on the budget for this year because it's a long and arduous process to get it all done and to get everything put in place. Had a very, very solid framework ready for us to move forward with. There were some things that were done different in the past when it comes to the budget with how the budget was presented to council and to that extent to what they would actually do with it after they got the budget. Excuse me. City charter's pretty clear. I'm responsible for working with our staff to give to the city council a budget that is balanced and that meets the needs of the city. Those are the two things I'm responsible for doing. So that's what we did. And this budget process was a lot different for our city council for our mayor this year because they'd never been through the process kind of the way that I did it. But we got through it. They understood what we did and why we did it. We spent three days in here from 10 o'clock in the morning till 5 o'clock in the afternoon going through it with them, adapting it in ways that they wanted it adapted and making sure that that they had a full knowledge of everything that was in there, why we were requesting, what we were requesting, and what they could do to try to move us further down the road. One of the things that I talked to council about before we even went into the budget process this year was that when we got the budget done, that we needed to make sure that we had some opportunity with the community to come in, sit, and see exactly what they had seen, a bridge version of it, of course, because we're not going to sit in here for 24 hours and go through it. But to see the bridge version of what we had presented to them so that each of you could understand just as clearly why we selected the needs that we selected for the city, why they were priority, and what it was going to take to move us down the road to meet that charter requirement of having a budget that was balanced that met the needs of the city. So I've taken, I don't know, Suzie, if we put all the documents together from the time we started till now, we'd have seven, eight hundred pages more. I've condensed it down to about thirty-five slides, and I'm going to go through the slides with you. There's not really a set format for this. We want this to be informational. We want to make sure that you get your questions answered. So I think what we'll do is, as we go through each slide, if you have a question about something on one of those slides, come up to the podium as I'm going through it. And before we go on to the next slide, then we'll stop and talk about those things at that time so that we don't get lost because they all kind of build on each other. I have all the directors here tonight, so if it's a question about a specific department or something we're doing within that department, then I can get the director up to help answer the questions or help talk about what the problems were and why we went that way. So we're gonna, we're gonna start out that way. Like I said, if you have questions, anytime during this you have questions, come on up. Let's try to get your questions answered early. So when we sat down this year and we started looking at the budget, we started looking at, at all the issues that the department directors bring. So basically, when we started the budget this year, they had their budget from last year. They brought that information to us. So basically, it's a, okay, this is how much money we have for your department last year. Show us what you could do with that same amount this year, but then bring all these supplemental sheets. If there's other things you need to do or other things that you feel are you required to do that don't meet within the framework of what you had last year, bring us those supplemental sheets so we can look at them and we can go through them, decide what the priorities are, and see where we can go from there. As we started going through the general process at the start of the, at the start of the budget term, we found some very blaring needs. And we kind of tried to set those off because most of those needs were also big money needs as well. So things that were affected by the general fund. So the general fund now, we have two different funds. We have general, well, we have a lot of different funds, but they really fall into two classifications, general fund or utility fund or an enterprise-type fund. General fund is property taxes and sales taxes, franchise fees, things like that. It's, 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 it's a tax or a fee that's assessed against somebody for something. So if we have a utility company that comes through town, AEP or Texas, New Mexico, or Center Point Gas, whoever, their lines are in our public right of ways. They utilize those public right of ways to transfer, to transport their product. So they have to pay the city for the use of those public right of ways because those public right of ways belong to the citizens, so they don't get to use them for free. So we have in, you know, all kinds of fees, eight-liner fees, bingo fees. I mean, there's a lot of different fees that are paid under statute and all that stuff comes in under our general fund. Then we also have utility funds. So our water, water, wastewater, trash systems, those fall underneath our utility fund. So we started trying to look at just the biggest issues that we had under each fund and try to starting to try to prioritize those issues under each fund. Under the general fund, obviously, one of the biggest issues we had, it came up right off the bat, it was, it was a subject of a lot of discussion before we even really got into, into budget this year, and that was the status of our fire trucks. When Chief Wyman came on, had him and his crew get us some information on what we had as far as our apparatuses that we use to fight fires. We have two apparatuses that work. The newest one that we have is ten years old and has about seventy-five thousand miles, chief. The second one's almost as old as some of the people in this room, about a hundred seventy-five thousand miles on it. There's a third apparatus that was involved in an accident where it was parked, being used to, at a scene, was rear-ended from behind by another pedestrian, and that apparatus was totaled by the insurance. We've been trying to get that apparatus fixed since I've been here, trying to find somebody that could do enough work on it where we could at least get it back in service as a blocker or something. So when we put a new fire engine out there, we could put this truck behind it with a big old huge scorpion bumper on the back of it. And if somebody wasn't paying attention, we wouldn't lose our brand-new apparatus. They would run into the back of the, of the one that, that we basically don't, we can't use anyway. But obviously, a need for, we got two, we have a need for two fire trucks. That was pretty clear from the start. Our ten-year-old truck would make a good backup, but even with that age and that mileage, we already need to be looking at it not being a full-time, not being the one we depend on all the time. So we looked at that. The wastewater treatment plant, the city of La Mark has received notice from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality about three years ago that we had exceeded seventy-five percent use of the wastewater treatment plant for three consecutive months. That is a trigger in state law that tells us at that point, we have to start planning an expansion. That was three years ago. Last year, the city, three months, three consecutive months, hit the ninety percent threshold. The ninety percent threshold is a TCEQ trigger that we're supposed to be in construction of our next phase of the water, wastewater treatment plant for expansion. City did do a feasibility study on the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, had some numbers. So TCEQ is working with us to make sure that we're getting to the point where we can do that expansion. The overall expansion of that plant's about eighteen, between eighteen and twenty million dollars. We're actually looking at trying to do that in phases so we don't have to spend all of that upfront. That's going to be a decision that councils, I think councils already decided they want to go with the phases because we don't have to come up with the eighteen million upfront. But even Phase One, Chase fourteen million, correct? Yeah, about fourteen million to get Phase One, which gets us caught up with our TCEQ requirements right now. Infrastructure, since I've been here, Chase texts and calls me more than anybody else, more than the rest of the employees combined. Water break over here, sir, sewer break over here, this, that, everything else. So our infrastructure in town's in pretty bad shape. Guess what? Everybody's infrastructure's in pretty bad shape. What municipalities have witnessed over probably the last twenty to twenty-five years, after about nineteen eighty-eight, when, when the Community Development Block Program kind of went away, you saw a lot of infrastructure weren't done between eighty and eighty-eight with, with, with block grants. Block grants, grants from the federal government where you could go in and fix streets, you could go in and fix water lines, whatever. There was, there was lots of opportunities. After that, those opportunities for federal funding kind of dried up. And when they kind of dried up, that meant that the city's revenue sources kind of dried up with that as well. That puts an elected council and an elected mayor in a very bad position. And so what you see happen is every year, when stuff happens, and it's happening again right now, we're seeing it happening again right now because of an incident happened here this weekend. You have all these things that the council's responsible for providing to you. They're responsible for providing fire protection, police protection, for making sure sewer, water, whatever your, whatever your utilities are that you have, along with everything else that they're required to provide. So we start having a bunch of shootings in town. What's going to happen? Focus is going to be on police, on emergency responders, and guess where that money has to come from? Having increased taxes of fourteen years, having increased utility rates since 2008, where's the money going to come from to build up fire, to build up police, or to build up any other department? It's out of money you've already got. So it's coming out of Public Works. It's coming out of those departments because without increasing taxes, there was no other place for them to get it. Because politically, when they increase taxes, everybody's going to get mad, aren't they? Or when they increase utility rates, everybody's going to get mad. But then, so there's not really any other place for that money to come from, but for there to be a shift inside of government, that shift at some point becomes what's called deferred maintenance. And deferred maintenance means, yeah, that water line is out of date, but we don't have the money to fix it this year. So guess what? We're not going to fix it this year because we can't. That sewer line needs to be replaced, but we don't have the money to do that this year. So put another Band-Aid on it, and we'll see if we can make it another year, another two years. Do this. Chase is the Band-Aid King around here. That's what Chase has been doing since I got here, is distributing Band-Aids all over town. Well, what happens when you distribute Band-Aids? You have a wastewater line that breaks, or you have a water line that breaks, and you go in and you fix that section of the line back to standards? Well, now all of a sudden, it carries the right pressures. And guess what's going to happen? Right down the line, it's going to break again, and it's going to break again. And before long, you spent more money in Band-Aids over a five-year period than you would have spent in one shot going back in there and fixing it the right way. You just didn't have the money to fix it the right way in the first place. So instead of spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars replacing that sewer line, or spending a hundred thousand dollars replacing that water line, you spent twenty-two thousand to fix it this year because you could figure out a way to pay for that, that one fix this year. And you spent twelve thousand dollars fixing the next break because you could figure out a way to do that. And you spent fifteen thousand the next time, but then all of a sudden, you've still got a broken line that you've put a hundred or a hundred thousand or more dollars in, you're still going to have to replace that line at some point because it's just going to continue to break between the Band-Aids. And that's what we're seeing happening with the infrastructure right now. Chase and his guys do a great job with very, very limited resources, and they've been very limited for a long time. And what you'll see is in this budget, we've had to address some of those limits that they've had over that course of time. Parks, I have had probably ninety-five percent of the people that I've talked to since I've been here, parks has been one of the big things that they wanted to see improved in this city. I kind of look at parks a little bit different than most people look at them because I think parks are like the, where we're talking with Colleen, we was talking about rainbow and glitters. Parks are the rainbow and glitters for everything because parks fix a lot. Parks fix pride in your community because they make the community look nicer. Parks affect economic development because now you're giving more amenities in the city, especially if they're good parks. You're giving the kind of amenities in this city that will draw somebody to this city and away from a city around us that doesn't have those same kind of amenities. Parks improve, give your kids something to do, it keeps them out of trouble, it reduces recidivism in your municipal courts, in your county courts. It cuts the amount of time our officers have to go out and meet with this same kid ten times in one year because he was bored and he didn't have anything to do. They can fix problems in almost every department that you have if you have nice parks with good amenities. Equipment, every time we turn around, it seems like Chase calls me, boss, we've got to fix this. What do we need? Well, we got to not only have the stuff to fix it, but we got to go buy, we got to go rent a piece of equipment because we don't have the right equipment. We got to go rent another bypass because it's, you know, we got a lift station that's down, and we've got all of our bypasses out right now. And so we got to go rent this. So we're spending a ton of money renting equipment. Over time, it's, again, it's that same thing. We could spend ten thousand dollars to rent that piece of equipment now, but it's going to cost a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to buy it. We don't have that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget right now, but I can find ten thousand to rent it. So I'm going to rent it so we can get the job done because we got to get the job done because we got to get the wastewater working again, or we got to get water working again. So we'll figure out how to rent it. We just can't afford to buy it right now. Part back to that deferred maintenance thing. City facilities, for those of you who have, have visited our police department, you'll know it's very crowded over there. We have some plans to try to do some different things for the police department when it comes to a facility for them that will be a lot bigger and a lot nicer. But again, that's something that's got to get, we got a phase two. And then employees, I am an absolute one-hundred percent firm believer that if we are not investing in our employees, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. I'm not just talking about making sure that they're paid, they're paid in a manner where we don't lose the good ones because they don't go to a neighboring city where they can make more money. We got to be competitive so we can keep good people here. But we're also got to make sure that we take good employees that we have and we turn them into great employees. We got to take great employees that we have, and we're always striving to make them a better employee, to give them something else, some other form of training we can do, something else we can do to make them better employees. Because the more you do to build them up, one, the better it is for the city and all citizens because they become a better employee. Two, they become loyal to the community and they want to stay here and they want to do their careers here. And so we've done some things in the budget related to employees. General fund employees haven't had a raise in four years, five years, Suzie? Four, five? Hadn't had a raise in four or five years, so we did build in a raise for the general fund employees. We also added in some additional training money to do some things for training for employees as well. Utility fund, whole separate monster. Other side, almost as many problems, as much money over there as we saw on the other side. We get our water from the Gulf Coast Water Authority. We have gone over our allocation three times in the last fourteen months. We're the only entity under the Gulf Coast Water Authority that goes over our allocation. There's been an opportunity for the city in the past to purchase additional water from Gulf Coast to make sure that we didn't go over. City never wanted to do it because they were going to have to do something to raise fees or raise taxes. In some mechanism, there's got to be some way to pay for it. So we've met with Gulf Coast when I first got here, asked them about our, what scenarios were available to make sure that we could secure the water that we needed for the future of the city. Found out we're actually very limited in what we could do. The Gulf Coast Water Authority just got a rerate on one of their treatment plants for the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, and that, that plant has now been rated to produce an additional seven-point-two million gallons a day of treated water. They don't have any additional water they can take out of the river. Gulf Coast Water Authority's taking everything out they could take out with the seven-point-two million. That's it. That's all they get, that's all we get for this area. Because of the fact that we've gone over, and nobody else is going over, we're probably a priority, they won't guarantee us we are, but we're probably a priority on that list for the seven-point-two million, and we're probably a priority to get a bigger chunk than everybody else gets. Because if you look at our neighboring cities, Texas City, they only hit fifty percent of their allocation every month. Some of the other cities around us are only hitting about seventy percent where we're hitting a hundred. And they don't want to leave us in that spot for one simple reason. That simple reason is there was a change in the legislation last year that basically says in a drought condition, formerly, if we went into drought scenario, if they went into a drought scenario through the Texas Gulf, through the Gulf Coast Water Authority, we could still go over our allocation. We just paid more. The new legislation, we can't go over allocation, period. That we go into drought contingency, we hit our three-point-two million gallons a day, we're cut off. That's not a good way to operate a city. So here we are, trying to grow our city, trying to bring new businesses into our city. We're over our water allocation. We're up to our limits in our wastewater treatment plant. Kind of businesses are you going to get to come here? What kind of people, who's going to want to come here if they're not guaranteed they're going to get water, and they're not guaranteed they're going to be able to use our wastewater treatment system? Nobody. So those are two big issues we've got to fix right off the bat to see, once this forty-five corridor is completed, to see that growth out there on the corridor, to see the things that we want to see come in that ultimately will end up reducing property taxes. Ultimately, we'll end up making it easier to live here. We've got to get it built up to that point first. You look at the other cities as they've grown, you look at their tax structures, their property taxes were high. As all that built, business grew up, by law, part of your sales tax structure says every time sales tax, your, your, your revenue from sales tax goes up, the next year, your property taxes do what, Suzie? They go down. They're forced to go down by law. We're not doing the things that we need to do here to set ourselves up to be successful, to make sure that we end up getting a chance somewhere down the road to reduce those property taxes and make it easier on our citizens that live here. Infrastructure, because part of it's water, I mean, the infrastructure you'll see is on both sides. It's a general fund and it's on utility fund. The reason it's that way is because if you don't address it with the utility fund, at some point, we're not going to have any choice but to address it with the general fund. So if we don't get the utility fund structure right, at some point, when those water lines break, there's not going to be any extra money in that fund. The fund balance in that fund right now, the way we were going was projected to be in the negative in twenty-twenty-one, Suzie, or twenty-twenty-two? Twenty-twenty-four. Every year, we're pulling that fund balance down. And at some point, it was going to, if we had a major issue right now that was a one or two million dollar issue, we'd be done. There's not even enough money in the fund balance, I think, to address that. So we're trying to get this fixed where we don't get to that point. We don't want to see that major thing happen where we end up in a whole bunch of trouble. And then, of course, we talked about the TCEQ issues. Now, remembering that a lot of our, our systems, when we talk about infrastructure, a lot of our water systems, our wastewater, some of that stuff out there is seventy years old. A lot of our lift stations are forty years old. Those things aren't designed to last that long. So they've been Band-Aided, they've been put back together, whatever. They were, the lifespan on those things was not forty years or not seventy years when it was put in. I know we saw a bunch of clay, we have a bunch of clay sewer lines there. We don't have any wooden ones, do we? I think seventy years ago, you couldn't use wooden ones. So in seventy years ago, your wastewater lines were clay. They were built with clay, they were laid in the, in the ground, compacted over the top of them, and your wastewater ran through clay pipes. What do you think happens to a clay pipe over seventy years with water running through the inside of it, with liquid running through the inside of it? A lot of those places, when you dig them up now, the paint shell is still there, but none of the clay left. Now you get a leak, and you go in and try to fix that, and there's not even a pipe to attach anything to. We had one, three weeks ago, we ended up pipe bursting, how many feet? Two, two hundred and something? Two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty feet? Because there was nothing to tie into. Nothing to tie into, and it was run right down people's backyards. So the only way we could do it was to start on one end where we found a solid piece of pipe, and pipe burst that thing all the way through until we found the other side. Cost us about forty thousand dollars to fix it. Only way we could fix it. And you can't have, we're a city, we can't have sewer leaks out in town. So we didn't have any choice but to fix it that way. And there's a lot more of those lines out there. They're all over the place, so we got to start, got to start paying attention to those. Okay, so fire trucks, we kind of talked about this. The newest one, ten years old. The oldest one's twenty-eight years old, a hundred and seventy-one thousand miles. Third one was totaled. New trucks are essential to make sure that we meet the needs of our citizens, obviously. So what did we look at? And what did the city council talk about doing in the budget? One truck purchased from reserves, which we're actually probably going to have on the agenda for Tuesday. Don't forget, Todd. We're going to have that on the agenda for Tuesday to get the approval to go and get that truck ordered because we've got a quote for the, we got a quote for a truck. Then, once we get into the next budget cycle, they've also approved one to be purchased in the next budget cycle so that we get the two. Those are going to be regular pumper trucks. Actually, we've got, they're, they're really nice trucks. We got, Chief got a really good deal on them. But it still doesn't address one other need that we have, and that's a ladder truck. And the reason that we need a ladder truck is because you can't build a building over four stories tall without ladder truck, correct? So when we're trying to get nice motels out here on the interstate, guess what? If they're five or six or seven-story tall motels, we don't have the equipment. They won't come in here because we don't have, and I count the apparatuses as part of our infrastructure. That's an infrastructure thing, too. We don't have the infrastructure in place for them to be able to come in and build those nicer facilities here because we just, we don't have it. We have our grant administrator working on, well, waiting for the grant to open up. There is a grant that's available each year where you can, you can purchase a fire truck out of that grant. And so we're going to work on that grant this year to try to get the ladder truck. Not sure the first year, fifty-fifty chance probably that we get it. Second year, a whole lot better chance that we would actually, actually be able to get that if, as long as we're consistent with putting in. So the city's going to purchase two, so we meet our current needs. And we have, we have dependable fire engines to be able to use out there. Then we're going to start looking at, how do we take the load off of the city to purchase this ladder truck? What can we do to get a grant to do something else? Because ladder truck, obviously, ladder truck, one ladder truck costs about the same as what both those engines are going to cost us. So we want to, we want to get somebody to help us with that. So we're going to work on trying to get a grant to get that ladder truck and then be able to put it out there and tell, tell Marriott if they want to come in here and build a ten-story tall motel. Guess what? We, we got you covered. We can, we can meet your needs now. We can, you can get your fire insurance in our town now because we have the truck. Make a big difference on being able to try to get some of those bigger businesses here. Wastewater treatment plant, again, we exceeded the seventy-five and ninety percent thresholds for three consecutive months. TCEQ has not only sent us the letters, they also monitor this. They watch to see what we're doing. Chase meets with them or talks, video, phone, video, phone calls with them frequently, conference calls with them frequently. And they're constantly asking, what are you doing? How are you moving forward? What's next? Where are you at? What, what are we doing? So they're keeping up with what we're doing. So now Chase has been able to go to them and say, okay, we are moving forward. We have a feasibility study done. That went before council at the budget workshop. In next year's budget, council has established a line item in the budget to make sure that we can get the, the design done. So that's a step forward. And as long as they see us continuing to take steps forward, that they're going to work with this, and they're not going to come in here and find us and any of the other stuff that they could do. Again, originally, it was one project that was between eighteen and twenty million dollars. We've asked for that to be split up with a Phase One that allows for all of our current issues to be resolved. That's the rehab that we need to do out there. The head works right before the main gate that goes into the wastewater treatment plant, that facility is supposed to have five pumps in it, has one. Because the other four went down and there was never money to replace them. And there's supposed to be five in that facility. Every time that pump goes down, we have to scramble to get that thing going again to make sure that we keep everything moving through the system. And, yeah, yeah, well, but, but the facility itself that's supposed to have five has one. So we talked about having to rent bypasses every time something happens because those bypasses are set up out there permanently to make sure that we don't have issues out there that we can't keep up with. That goes back to deferred maintenance. Then Phase Two, so basically, what we discussed with council is, as you all know, there's a huge piece of property in town that belongs to University of Houston. We, when we looked at what we needed to do with Gulf Coast Water, when we looked at what we needed to do at the wastewater treatment plant, we looked at what we needed for La Mark to be fully developed. Then we took out University of Houston. Because right now, it doesn't appear that's going to move forward very fast because they're putting all their efforts into Katy and some other places. They're watching the grass grow out here on the property here. So two phases. Phase One meets all that other growth requirements and our current requirements. Phase Two, that would be the University of Houston phase. If something ever happened with that property, whether they decided to get rid of it, whether they decided to build on it, whatever, if something happened there, it's no sense in spending that money to be put into the wastewater treatment plant right now if nothing's ever going to happen out there. So we pushed that off into a second phase so that we didn't have to do that. And that, that cut our project cost down to about fourteen million dollars to do all the rest of it and delay the rest of the infrastructure we would need. Then if, if something happens on the U of H property and we have a chance to develop that and grow more, then we'll talk to them. And we may even push the cost of finishing that facility off on them at that point because they waited so long to develop it. So we pared it down as far as we could. But the Phase Two is what we need to meet our current, our current requirements and make sure we have enough room for growth. If we put, if we put enough just to get past the seventy-five percent marker again, then as soon as we hit seventy-five percent for three months again, they're going to come right back to us and tell us to start again. And when they tell us to start again, we're going to be right back as well again. So we went ahead to the, the build out to everything but the U of H property, which in the long run is going to be the best, the best way for us to do it. Again, the infrastructure, again, we got an aging system, needs lots of work. Spend more time repairing than we do improving. Lift stations, we're constantly working on lift stations, water leaks. Luckily, we got a little bit of rain and they kind of slowed down a little bit. I'll tell you right now, when we get it, when it starts to dry out, you'll see Chase's crews out there twenty-four hours a day because as it dries out, that dirt that's around those lines shrinks. And when it shrinks, the weak spots pop. And when the weak spots pop, all of a sudden, we have leaks everywhere. Last little dry spell we had, Second Street, ridiculous. Every day, they'd fix one, and then get the pressure would build back up there, and they'd go to the next one, and it'd bust again. What anything they could do, we'd go back in there and repair it again. So we got to get to the point where we're not repairing, but we're actually improving our system. As what's built in the budget, there's a number of the lift stations that are built in the budget to be, to be renovated so we can get a bunch of those issues fixed with the lift stations, make sure we get our wastewater system working the way it's supposed to work. We have two drainage projects that we've talked about as part of this next year. One of them, we're actually working on it, actually, the grant was submitted last week. We are ninety-nine-point-nine-nine percent sure we're going to get the funding for that project. And that's the Marion Melody area. And we have, we have, I think we've got the right design over there to fix that and get that thing working again. It actually does the drainage system for that part of town is one half of the grant. The second half of the grant is a retention pond at the end of our, of our drainage for the system. Because part of what happens in a really bad rainstorm is we get water out of town down to the county, down to the dyke, to the county pumps. The county pumps can't keep up. So when they're not keeping up, it pushes water back into town. Then there's no place for anything to drain. So what we're looking at is acquiring, is trying to acquire a piece of property out there and build a large retention pond out there that would allow a lot more of the water to get out of town and be stored there until the pumps out there can catch up. We're not the only ones that's doing that. Texas City's also doing one of those, and Texnot's also doing one of those down there. So we're looking at, if, if we can get our project through, which I think we will, and Texas City gets, Texas City's looking at a new pumps. They're not looking at, they're looking at pumping, which would help us as well. So if they get their project through, we get ours through, we know Texnot's going to do theirs as part of the forty-five renovation, that gets a significant amount more water out of town faster, which should alleviate a bunch of the flooding problems that we have in town as well. So that should help a bunch also. Again, water and sewer, there's constantly, there's all kinds of work that needs to be done on water and sewer. And again, remember, we're, we're trying to set up this framework in a way where everybody is, is helping with this. And what I mean by that is, we're also looking on this other side. Okay, what do we got out there available for grants that we can go after? I don't care if they're five thousand dollar grants. Fire department just got through doing, well, fire department's working on a five thousand dollar one, a thirty thousand dollar one with our grant administrator right now. Any grant that we can go get that can alleviate part of the strain off of the budget, we're going to start going after every one of those grants. There's tons of money out there. And we just got to be, we got to be forceful about going after it. We got to make sure that we meet the deadlines. And you know what? This first year, we may not be successful on a bunch of them. But when they start seeing us there repetitively, that's when you get successful in the grant programs. So we've got to establish that mechanism this year. I think we're working on seventeen, fifteen, seventeen grants, something right now, applications that we have working. So we can make sure we get our name out with all these groups. Uh, so we can make sure we get our name out with all these groups, um, and be able to do that. Um, the two projects, the G O L projects, the Marion Melody and the other, uh, that's Harvey money, uh, that's available. We know that that money, there was an amount set aside for the city of Lamarck. It was a little over, a little under three million, a little over, little over. Right at three million. Uh, that's the, the Marion Melody drainage and again, getting started on the retention pond. A bunch of the cities that were eligible for that money, we know are not putting in especially on the buyout and acquisition money. Uh, buyout and acquisition money is what we're using to build the pond or to, to get the land and get started on the pond. We think there's, we know there's gonna be a round two. Uh, we were number three on the priority list the first time. Uh, there's gonna be a round two, that money that's left over is gonna be put back in for another round and we're gonna have an opportunity to go back and get more of it. Uh, so by having both of our projects, um, ready for this first round that we submitted last week. If the other two cities above us did not have two projects, if they just did one and not the other, that should move us up the priority list as well. So we may even be first priority on the second, second batch of money. There may be more money available in that second batch. But it's because of all the work we put into the first batch is why we're gonna be able to get to that. Uh, so we're working on that and we, we work on those every day. Our grant administrator drives us nuts asking questions. Um, and I know she's driving the staff nuts asking questions too, but it's important that we get all that stuff answered. That we get any of this one, any, any free money that's out there, we need to go get because reality is not free money. It's our tax money. And we can either get it and spend it in our town or somebody's gonna get it and spend it in theirs. So let's get it and spend it in our town and spend as much of it as we can in our town. And then we don't have to worry, uh, about having such a pull on our general fund and on our utility funds. Um, Gulf Coast Water, uh, again, we have a daily allocation of about two point seven eight million gallons per day. Uh, we exceeded that allowance three of the last fourteen months. Uh, we're only one exceeding, um, the other seven million. So we did two things with them. We requested an additional million dollars, or a million dollars, an additional million gallons a day be made available immediately. Um, that's out of the seven million that's available out there right now that they're, they're deciding how they're gonna split it up to everybody. Um, so we requested a million gallons of that a day. That not only keeps us from going over, uh, it protects us during a drought scenario. It gives us a little bit for growth, um, because that's important when we have people coming in here, businesses or whatever, coming in here wanting to, wanting to look at that. We need to have that, that water secured right now. Um, now the second. Budget, second batch of water that they have available is not available right now. They have, they have been told that they're gonna get one more allocation out of the Brazoria River, one more, and that'll be the last one that they get. It's gonna be available in five to seven years. They've gotta build the infrastructure to get it here. They gotta build the treatment plant. They gotta do all that stuff before they can take it. It's gonna be available in five to seven years, but if you want it, you have to get in line today. At the same time they do this other allocation, they're also looking at distributing what they're calling, uh, options, purchase options. On that additional water in five to seven years. That additional water in five to seven years for every million gallons that you request, it's fifty thousand dollars a year just to hold the option. So you have to pay them fifty thousand dollars a year to get nothing for five to seven years, then you can get the water. If you don't buy the options, in seven years you don't get it. Now. That decision for a lot of people would be difficult to make. Do you buy the options or do you not buy the options? Uh, because of my background, that's an easy decision for me to make because I've seen what happens when those options run out. I came. From a state, I spent eighteen years and this is what I did was water appropriation. And what happens with that, when that runs out, that fifty thousand dollars a year turns into five hundred thousand dollars a year. Because those who have get to sell and those who have have to buy. Uh, that's just the way it is. But we talked about that a while ago. Texas City doesn't hit fifty percent of their appropriation every, or their, of their allowance every month. You know why? Cause they're banking it for the future. Every time they get a chance to get more, they went and got it. And they're paying for it right now because they know somewhere down the road, they're gonna either be able to become a supplier. For industry, or they're gonna be able to become a supplier for other communities and they're gonna make money off everybody else. And they're gonna make a lot of money off everybody else. The only way that we can make sure that we don't end up in that boat where we're having to pay that. Is to buy those options now so that five to seven years from now, we have the water that we need for the future. And we're not dependent on another community or we're not dependent on going to one of these, um, industries out here that have contracts with Gulf Coast as well. That aren't using theirs and buying from industry because we know what that's gonna cost us. Uh, so we, we've asked to be put in line for two options, um, two million gallon options, uh, a day. So that would get us. When it's all said and done, if we get the additional million now and we get the additional two million in five to seven years, we would be at five point seven eight million gallons per day. And our projections at full growth, I think was about five point two. Um, so that makes sure that we have enough water to secure our future. Um, when I was a young man, my dad taught me one very, very important lesson when it came to living. On a farm or a ranch or in a city or anything else, and that is this whiskey is for drinking and water's for fighting. And trust me, when it comes down to there being no water, that's when the fight starts. And it becomes a whole lot more expensive than any whiskey you ever drank. Uh, so we need to make sure we get ourselves in line to be able to get, to secure our own future and not have to depend on somebody else to secure our future. Other TCQ issues, water storage. Um, two thousand and sixteen, Chase, when we got the notice on Gulf Greyhound? We are required by TCQ on any, any place that we store water, elevated storage, ground storage tanks, underground storage tanks, any place that we store. Water, you're required by TCQ to clean those tanks and have them inspected every other year, but you're also required to provide a minimum. It's almost like. It's like a restaurant when their franchise agreement runs out the first time, they have to go in, they have to put in new, do new tables and chairs and change the signs and do all the stuff that you see them do. You also have to do that on your elevated storage tanks. In twenty sixteen, we received notice that the tank at Gulf Greyhound Storage. Needed to be rehapped, which means it needs to be, it needs to be cleaned on the outside, not the inside. The inside inspections have been done. Has to be cleaned on the outside, repainted, anything on it that's not, um, that's not working fixed. Um, again, twenty sixteen, that's three years ago we received that notice and we have not done anything with it yet either. So the council also built into this budget, um, the, the funding that we needed to make sure that we were able to rehab that tank. Um, it will be, uh, branded for the city. It won't be branded for, for Gulf Greyhound. It's gonna be branded for the city. Uh, but it's gotta be painted, it's gotta be redone. And that's something that we need to get done this next budget here also because at some point they could come in and tell us we can't use that tank. Well, if we can't use that tank, we got a big problem. Uh, so we have to make sure we get that, that kind of, so that is in this next year's budget as well as the rehab of that tank. City facilities, we talked about the, the police department and the, the needs for more space over there. Um, Chief Jackson, uh, has been meeting with, well, prior to the time I got here, right about the time I got here. Had met with the school district about the Texas, about the old Lamarck ISD administration building. Uh, we actually went over there and met with them a couple of times and looked at it significantly larger, um, than where they're at right now. Uh, a lot of needs met in that building. Also some things that, some needs that aren't met in that building. Uh, i.e. there's no jail in the, in that administration building. There's some other things there. Um, so we've been working with the school to try to get the school to sign that building and some property with it over to us. Uh, so that that building could have a, a renovation done on it, um, so that it could be used as a, as a police, as a police department. Um, still talking to the superintendent. Um, he did send me a text message, uh, this last week. He's working on, on trying to get us an agreement to get that building. Um, so there is some money in the budget. There is a line item in this year's budget. That would be for the renovation of that building or at least getting started on the renovation of that building as well. And that is along, along with some other things. I mean, if you guys have been in city hall, um, the carpet in there, I would not want a businessman, a, a, a business owner coming in. Wanting to move into our city and seeing the carpet in that building, there's stains all over that carpet from flooding. There's, I mean, there's all kinds of issues over there. So some little cosmetic things to make our city look bitter, look better for, uh, somebody that wants to move here, for somebody that, that wants to come in and spend money in our town. To make our town better, uh, we'll try to do some small things with that as well. Employees, uh, all non-CBA covered employees have not had an hourly increase in four years. Uh, current workload, um, had the city utilizing a significant number of contractors and temp employees. And all those things kind of led to a really weird smorgasbord of how we were doing things. So last year in the budget process, the city council approved some new positions. They approved those new positions out of reserves. You can't pay for bodies out of reserves because at the end of the year, there's no money there again. So if you don't have that money in the, if you don't have it budgeted in the general fund as a recurring cost, then at the end of the year, you're, you, you, you basically are telling them after one year, you're gone. Uh, so a lot of the positions weren't filled because there was some, there was a lot of, of, uh, there was a lot of confusion about what really needed to happen with those. So what we did in this year's budget is we built them into the general fund. Uh, so that they are funded, the, the funding is recurring for them. Um, and there was additional employees that were approved last year for fire, uh, for public works, utilities, permitting, code enforcement and some others. Um, but what we ended up doing because we weren't, that we weren't able to hire the employees, we ended up using temporary, uh, temp for hire. Which ends up costing the city a little bit more. Uh, and then we actually looked at some of the departments as well. At some of the things we were doing under contract and we're getting rid of some contracts and bringing in employees into those. Into those roles and responsibilities so that we can cut costs. So we actually were able to pay. I'm gonna say, we probably paid for a quarter, if not more of the new employees by getting rid of some of the contracts we had. With previous employees. I'll give you a, a great example. In our planning and zoning, uh, our, our community, uh, development department. Um, we have a con, we had a contract with the company to do all of our building inspections. Um, that contract was costing us about three hundred and how much, Suzie, over three hundred thousand a year? We can get a permit, we can get a building inspector for a hundred thousand a year on staff that works for us. Um, so we cut that contract and that was one of the first things we did was we got rid of that contract and put a plan, a planning, uh, a plan inspector, I don't remember what the title is, but we put. We put this additional position in. So we saved a bunch of money right there that went towards paying for a lot, a lot of these other employees. As well, so we could get them off temp to hire and make them city employees, uh, where it's, it's, it's a better working arrangement if we do it that way. Uh, and then again, we did put the five percent, uh, increase in there for the employees because we've got to provide a, we gotta provide a livable wage one. We also need to be competitive. If we're not competitive, we're not gonna keep our best. And we gotta make sure we keep our best employees. So we gotta be competitive with cities around us. One of the things that I'm also gonna do during this next year, that was not even close to time to do it this year, is we'll do a salary review with the, the surrounding cities around us. So the council can actually look and see, okay, at this position in the surrounding city, this is what this person would make. And make sure that we're being competitive and make sure that we're, we're, we're giving, if we have an opening, and I've told the directors this. Chief Wyman, of course, had a lot of openings when he first got here because a bunch of the, we, we had the positions. That had vacated at the fire department. We kind of held them until we got a new chief so he could get, um, get people in there that, that he felt comfortable bringing in. Um, you know, that's what we told, we don't want, we don't just wanna fill them. We want the best person we can get in that place. We want the best person, the captain seat that we have open. We want the best person sitting in that captain seat. I got the best chief I could get. I got the best chief you could find. We wanna do the same thing with the rest of our positions as we fill those, is make sure we get the best person we can get in that. And we don't wanna, we don't wanna have a list of five and say, yeah, this one's the best, no, we can't afford this one and this one, well, yeah, but we can't afford it. So let's take number four. Well, what happens if you take number four? Did any of you, did any of you marry your fourth choice? Cause first one was too expensive? No, you didn't. So why would we wanna hire our fourth choice? We don't wanna hire our fourth choice. We wanna hire the top person we can get every time. Um, so, so we're gonna look at some more of that stuff during the course of this year as well. Parks. So looking at all these huge issues that we had. There was so much that we had to do with getting everything in place to make sure we were dealing with the employees that we needed to, to get in that would have been previously put in. Dealing with infrastructure, dealing with buying fire trucks, dealing with all these things. Um, parks is another one of those things that becomes what? Deferred maintenance, always becomes deferred maintenance. Everybody just forgets about it. Well, so we came up with a different strategy for dealing with the parks. And I know there's been a few people that weren't too happy with it, but it's the best strategy we could come up with. To make sure that we are committed to making an investment in those parks every year. And so what we came up with is a two dollar per month, uh, per account charge on your utility bill that will be called a parks user fee. Um, that will provide approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue, uh, which allows us to bond about two million dollars every fifteen years. Um, so we can make major improvements immediately, one. Two, we could take that money, there's a lot of grants that are available out there. You have to have matching money for. Parks grants are the worst about requiring matching money. You never find a parks grant, um, but I think we found one, um, so far, but you don't, you hardly ever find a parks grant that doesn't require a match. They always want fifteen percent, twenty-five percent match, something. Well, now we've got somebody we can use for a match. So if I can find a, a, one of the ones we're looking at right now, there's a, there's a, a grant out there right now that is fifty percent, it's a fifty percent match on equipment. Well, so if we had this money and we wanted to buy, we went and looked and we could put all the equipment we wanted to put in all the parks for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, guess what? With that grant, now it becomes three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And so we have the money available to do that to where before we would not have the money available to do that. And so this establishes a mechanism where we can go get more bonds. Uh, it opens us up having, you know, it opens up a bunch of other things. We talked about it. It gives a kid something to do to get out of trouble. We're not just talking. I mean, there's gonna be a process to determine what we're gonna do with the parks and we, those of you that have been in the meetings, you've heard this. Uh, one of the things that we did is we also included this budget fifteen thousand dollars in a separate line item for a parks master plan. The parks board out of the donations that they've received set aside fifteen thousand dollars to match it. So we got thirty thousand dollars to complete a parks master plan. That thirty thousand dollars ought to give us a very, very good parks master plan. Those people, whoever gets it, that's the, the RFP's already out, is it not? No, we have the RFP approved though. Not approved, we just haven't let it yet. We'll hire a firm to come in and do that. City's removed from it. It's an independent firm that comes in and does it. They're gonna go out and meet all over town. With, with, with citizens all over town. What part, they're gonna, they'll have a map. Here's all of our parks. What parks do you use? What amenities do you wanna see in those parks? And they're gonna come back and they're gonna put together this plan and say, okay, based on what the citizen said, this is what they wanna see. They wanna see, um, they wanna see, uh, uh, whatever. I mean, it could be anything. Um, they wanna see a splash pad in this park over here. They wanna see. Um, you know, something different, a skate park in this park over here. They wanna see this in this park over here. That gives us an opportunity to open up a lot of different recreational activities, uh, for our kids that may help keep. Uh, some of them out of trouble. It's gonna help the police department. It's gonna help the community look better. And it's gonna help us reach some of these kids that we probably haven't been reaching with parks that are forty acres and have one set of swings in the middle and that's it. We gotta do something else to make those parks attractive to those kids. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I just have a, I'm a local, um, soccer coach, um, been here in Lamarck for ten years and, um, and pretty much on the park issue, um, we've been practicing right here at, um, La Guana for a minute and, um, soccer goals was, was taken from us. So we're, we're actually, um, trying to reach out to find where can we, um, have our goals be put back, whatever park that we can practice or play in again. And I'm just trying, I'm just speaking for. Um, the parents and the kids that I have in the Lamarck community that's, that's coming up on the meeting.
You know, before, give Chase your phone number?
Yes, sir.
Talk to us after the meeting. Let's see if we can address that after the meeting.
Great, great. Thank you so much.
You bet. Yes. It will be on any utility bill. So yes, Omega Bay is gonna get it on the trash bill.
Even though none of us drive up here and go to any of the parks.
We're gonna make this. You're gonna, these parks, these parks are gonna be so nice, you're gonna drive up here and use them. I'll make you. I'll bring you up here.
Yeah, are you gonna put one in? I'll make a back.
Where? Yeah, for a big, I mean, for a big added park.
We have park land that has nothing there. It's just open, open lot, no swings, no nothing.
You're gonna, you know, there's a, there's a, there is a way that could be done. Um, talk to me after the meeting, cause that's a long talk. Yes, Miss Sam?
In this area around in the Lakeville area, that's really not a nice park here in this area. And, uh, so I would like to know, we thinking about putting a park in the inner city area because there's that.
So, so that's something that will come out, that's something that's gonna come out of the park master plan process. I mean, that's one of the things that you guys need to bring to that group. Is if, if that's, if that seems to be a major, you know, a major focus is getting a, somehow developing a larger park in the center of town. Um, I mean, that's something that needs to come out of that process. Council has no, I mean, I, nobody said anything to me at this point and I'm sure they don't. Because they, they understand what we're talking about in this process. They're gonna sit back and wait and see what the master plan says. I mean, that's the purpose of doing a master plan because that master plan, when that group comes and they meet with all the citizens. And talk about the needs and the wants and the everything else, that basically puts all that stuff together and, and lets that, that, that contractor bring it back and say, okay, city council. Here's what we found. Here's what we recommend based on what we found. Uh, so they're, they're kind of just sitting around waiting to hear. I, I mean, they're not gonna sit here and say, yeah, we're just gonna do this. They wanna see the master plan too. That's not the only master plan we're gonna start working on because, I mean, we've talked about a master plan for buildings. Uh, because we've kind of just been throwing stuff around when building stuff comes up too. There needs to be a master plan on buildings and. How we're gonna keep, keep buildings moving and what we're gonna do with buildings over the next fifteen years. It needs to be a master plan on, on infrastructure. I mean, we're working on a bunch of them all at once. Uh, but the parks needs to be separate from that because if you don't do parks separate from it, it'll just get, it'll get lost in the, in the myriad. And that's why we did this too, so it doesn't get lost. Kyle said it's time for everybody to go home. Okay, sales tax. Now we're gonna start talking about some of the, some of the revenues. So when we're doing that, when we're doing that budget and we're trying to figure out how that budget all works. We sit down and look at what all of our costs are. It's just like you at home. Every month you sit down and look at what your total costs are. You gotta pay your mortgage, you gotta pay for groceries, you gotta buy gas. Then you also look the other side. What's my income coming out the other side? So revenues are the city's income that's coming in on the other side. So of course, one of the biggest revenues. So of course, one of the biggest revenues we have is sales tax. And what I'm, I really, really, really want to focus on this so that everybody understands. What I think the budget they're doing this year and the direction we're going, why I think this becomes what you guys. Are all waiting for is this part right here. So if, if you look at sales tax over the last fifteen years, there's been, there's, there's an increase. It went from two point two million in two thousand and four to three point eight in twenty eighteen. That's good. So over the course of that same time, if you look at property taxes, property taxes has actually gone down twice. The tax rate was pushed down twice because of that. But you see a net increase of about one point six five seven million dollars. Or about five point four percent per year. That's great. If you, when you're talking about sales tax, when you sit in my seat, you always want to see that line headed that direction because when that line starts heading that direction, you're in trouble. So as long as you see the line headed up, that means you're still seeing growth. That means that you're still, you're still growing and moving and, and that means that your, your economy and your talent is good. Everything's getting better. I have, I have one concern about sales tax right now. We've seen it happen in the cities between us and Houston. As this I forty-five expansion went through, a lot of those cities that that expansion went through, they saw their sales tax numbers drop off a little bit. Some bigger than others because you have exits that are closed. You have people that get on them frontage roads and, and if you, and if you've been up around League City Webster and they're where, where they're working on it. If you're coming out of another street trying to get on that frontage road and that interstate is blocked. You may be sitting there fifteen minutes trying to get onto that. And so people don't want to get off on those feeder roads. Because they know it's going to take them forever to get back in. So I think that's where we've seen, we've seen the reduction in the sales tax there. Of course, the biggest concern here is going to be what happens. When the I forty-five construction comes through where Sam's and Walmart's at, because that's where the majority of our growth in sales tax has been is Sam's and Walmart. So what's going to happen when that intersection is affected? So we're probably going to see a little glitch in there. I don't think we're going to see the steady. We're going to, there's going to be a little bump. And there somewhere, but we know five years we're done. When we're done, we've got this pretty new corridor down through here. We've got our waters, our water problem fixed because we're going to have the extra allocation from Gulf Coast. We have our wastewater plant fixed. So we're going to have that problem fixed. Hopefully by the time it's full of them, by the time it's done, we have a ladder truck sitting there. All those issues that have kept us from. Really going after the, the, the huge heavy hitters and getting them to commit to come here quickly. They're gone. Then we're going to see that number not look like this. It's going to look like this because the growth is going to come so quick. And it's going to be the growth that brings a lot of money along the corridor. It's going to grow so quick that sales tax number is going to do this and property taxes are going to do this. And that's what we're trying to get to. If we don't get ourselves set to where we can ever get to that, we're in trouble. We've got to get to the point where we could see sales tax go from this to this. And that's, that's what we tried to impress on the council this year. Is we've got to make the investment now to get to that point. We got to be ready when that I forty-five is done. For that growth to come so that we can get to the point where we can push, you know, we can get. Sales taxes through the roof to the point where we're not worried about property taxes to survive. We're living on sales taxes. Be nice if we could ever get to the point like Webster did at one time where they were basically not charging people for city services, which they was illegal and they couldn't do. They're making so much money on their sales tax, they didn't care about the rest of it. So they were giving every break they could give to their citizens because they had that growth. We don't have the infrastructure in place right now to get to that growth and that's what we're trying to get to. Hopefully, but again, that effect should be short term. If we do see a decrease, it's going to be short term. And I think on the other side of it, we'll, we'll make it up quickly, but we've got to get everything else in place to make it up on that other side. Utility rates, water and wastewater rates have not been increased since September eighth of two thousand and eight. Utility rates should cover the cost of operating your utility system. And that's all the cost. That's, that's paying for your employees. That's delivering water to your house. That's getting the wastewater out of your house and delivering it to the wastewater treatment plant. That's repairing lines. It should cover all that. We decided that there's no way we're going to try to adjust utility rates in one year to actually fix every, there was no way because utility rates would went through the roof. So what we looked at was a, 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 an, an increase in the utility rates where it bounced out where we fixed some other inequities that we saw. And utility rates as well. We'll talk about that in a minute. So that we could start getting some of the stuff fixed. We could get the money to make sure we move forward with the wastewater treatment plant that we got our water tower fixed. Or rehabilitated. That we were able to start fixing those lift stations because those things have got to get done and how we could get some of those things fixed. Not fixing everything, but fixing the big issues again and getting those, getting some of those big issues off the plate. The trash, I want to make very clear on the trash. That's a contractual utility. We don't operate the trash. Every year there's an increase in trash. That's my contract. It doesn't matter who you do a contract with. That's the way it's going to be. So city council every five years, ten years, however often they want to, they, they want to do it. They sit down, they take RFPs in. They pick the best service at the cheapest rate, but I've never in my life seen a trash contract that didn't have a two, three, four, five percent. Automatic increase in it every year is part of the contract. Because they don't know that their costs are going to go up too because they can't go four years without giving their employees a raise because they'll lose them. They can't do all those things. So they build it into their contract. So that's why, so just understanding that council didn't have any choice but for that trash bill to go up every year because that's what the contract requires with whoever our trash contractor is. Reserves. Okay, so historically. When budget season came to budget meetings with council. What had been done was a, this, this, this bare bones budget like we talked about a while ago. They took last year's budget. They manipulated things around. They put in there what they could do under that same budget and then they came in with this big list of, of wants and wishes and whatever else, everything else they, they needed. That came to council. And there was basically, okay, you have this much in reserves. You can do this with it. Here's all the things they're asking for. You can do these things. Well, that's part of what created. Part of our problem this last year was they went back and funded employees out of that and that's not the way you're supposed to do it. So what we did this year was we sat down with all the directors with their budgets and their wish list or their other items that they needed. And said, okay, how do we make all this fit together? What's really the most important? And trust me, departments did not get everything they asked for. They didn't even come close to getting everything they asked for. But it's like, what do we have to have to get from point A to point B, which is that sales tax thing going this way? So we're better off. What do we, what do we have to put in there? What can be paid for out of reserves? What needs to be paid for out of the, out of the general fund? If we move this to general fund, what other expenditures do they have that we could take out and pay with reserves? Because again, if, if the city has extra in reserves. We should not be going out and, and, and recommending a tax increase if there's money sitting in the bank that we're not required to hold. I mean, that's basically the bottom line. So it's like, okay, everything above what we're required, we need to spend that. And then whatever's left, whatever else we need to get, that's where it'll get. So a lot of these things, fire truck. A lot of these things are being bought out of reserves. They're being bought out of money that we had. But I want to explain this as we go through. So reserves, the cities required by policy. To carry ninety days of operating expenses in reserve. So we get our total budget done for the year, whatever that budget is. That's, that's just pick an easy number. I said a budget was ten million dollars. Council is required to have ninety days of that. So you take that ten million, you divide it by basically by twelve and times three. That's ninety days, three months. So basically you're saying the budget for the year is X, three months of it is this much. That's got to be set aside. That's the case. We have some catastrophic event higher here. We can still continue to operate. Because you have a catastrophic event, you're not bringing in sales tax. You know, your property taxes are going to. The next year, there's all kinds of issues that come with that. We got to be able to get our city. Moving again as fast as we can. And that ninety days is so we can get streets cleared, so we can get infrastructure fixed, whatever we need to do to get our city, be the city again. Remembering that as a budget grows each year, so does that ninety days. That amount becomes more every year as well. We just received the audit back from the end of twenty eighteen and the fund balance is about five point five, a little over five point five million dollars. Ninety day requirement on, for this, for that year was about two point nine million. But because the budget is, is bigger this year, the, the, the ninety day requirement is about three point two million for this next year. So first thing, three point two million, set off the site. Then we started talking about other stuff. So if you look at what happened during Hurricane Harvey. During Hurricane Harvey, the city had expenses that were not normal expenses. You have debris removal. You have all these things that are not normal operating expenses. So that total cost from Harvey was about one million dollars. And so we said, okay. We need to set another emergency storm fund off on the side. So that that doesn't affect our ninety days because if we're pulling that out of our ninety days, if we're removing debris and we're pulling all that out of our ninety days. Our ninety days really is only sixty days. We're not meeting the needs of that policy. So we put another million off to the side and said, okay, now we have a storm reserve. That storm reserve is for doing those things. Any expense we have from a storm comes out of storm reserve. And that way we can make sure we keep the city going ninety days. We'll get it put back together in ninety days. So we set those things off to the side and then we knew what we had left. And it's like, okay, so we have X number of dollars left. What can we buy with that X number of dollars? So we, we, we look. So anything we could do that was a one-time expenditure, equipment, anything like that, we pushed all that over that we could into what was left in that reserve fund after we set aside what we had to have. Took that out of the, that took that out of what we had to fund in this year's budget. And made, and it made it easier for us to be able to, to get some more of the stuff that we needed to get in this first year. So I think that, I mean, I want to make that point very clearly. The city is only going to hold in reserve what we are required to hold. There's nothing extra sitting there. There's enough for us to keep going for ninety days and clean up a Harvey sized storm. That's what we have put away for emergency. Now, what happens if wastewater treatment plant? Completely goes down. Guess what? We're going to have to pull out of reserves to fix it. Which means the next year, anything that we have left over this year would have to go back in to refill that reserve line item. So it's, I mean, it can be pulled out for other things. If we have an emergency, it's going to shut down the town. We can use it if, if council approves that. So don't doubt, don't anybody think that, oh yeah, they're planning for a storm, but what if something else happens? Well, it can be used for that too. But that's the amount that we have to have put away every year. So when we got to that point, it's like, okay, how do we get from point A to point B? Point A is where we were with deferred maintenance for thirty years and all these things to point B where we see this in the sales tax. How do we get there? And what's the mechanism to get there? So our job, again. Here's what it takes to get there in the budget. This is what we need to be a city. This is how much it costs. Here's what our revenue sources are. How do we get from point A to point B? Revenues have got to match expenditures. Because we have to give them, we have to give them a balanced budget. We can't give them a balanced budget. So we sat down and started looking at, at everything. So property tax, having had a property tax increase in fourteen years, you know what? We're going to have to look at property taxes. Told the council that minute. Right after I got here, you guys are going to have to look at something. Never seen the city had a property tax increase in fourteen years. It's like, we got to do something here. Then in the course of everything that was going on, at the same time, the legislature passed Senate Bill Two. Senate Bill Two, very. How do I say this? I always get very irritated when I have this conversation. So over the last couple of years. I was city manager in another city before I came here. Got our very first budget hearing in another city last year. Had done nothing yet. Hadn't even proposed a tax increase yet. We didn't do a tax increase. Had, hadn't even talked about taxes yet. Had a citizen come in to that budget hearing, walk up to the podium. You raised my taxes and I want to know why. Everybody's taxes, city taxes went up and they blamed the city. Cities didn't do that. Legislature did it. I'll tell you how legislature did it. If you go back and look over the last two years, your property values. Went up, right? Why did they go up? I'll tell you why they went up. Because one of the ways the legislature was getting their funding that they were getting for schools was to claw back from other schools. So the city that I was in, South Texas, oil filled everywhere. Not in the city, city is poor. County around it loaded with oil. But guess what? School district's not just a city, right? It's unincorporated, unincorporated areas, everything else too. So they were able to, the legislature was able to drive up their property values to the point. Where the oil field was paying a significant amount more money in taxes. So they could claw it back from the school district that I was in because the amount of money that they were getting. Was way above the, the, the per capita number per student. They were able to claw that back and send it to the big cities. And that was how they were paying for their fund deficit for schools in San Antonio and Austin and Houston. And that's how they were paying for it. Was by clawing it back from the, from the smaller schools. And the whole time Abbott was sitting on TV telling us the cities that are doing this to you. It wasn't, it was never the cities. Matter of fact, there were cities that had tax decreases during that time. But the tax values continued to go up. So your school taxes are the ones that you pay the huge chunk on, right? School taxes are huge and that was the big increase everybody saw in their property taxes. But it all got blamed on the cities. And to finish it out because they, because nobody could ever get them cornered on it to finish it out. They went to legislature, they said, oh, we're going to take care of the cities for you. We're going to limit what they can do on sales, on property tax. We're going to hold them to a three point five. Because they knew they were done with their increases. So guess what? Now it looks like the cities were the bad guy. We, we, now we've got the cities under control. And we did this for you. They do a thing for you. But create eight hundred million additional dollars for them to use. To fix their problems because they didn't want to give up anything else that they were doing. And I got through without getting mad this time. So. Cities didn't do it. But basically what happened is prior to this year. The cities have been allowed to increase property tax up to eight percent, anything below eight percent. Without that increase being subject to a rollback collection. That number was, was determined because if you look at increased prices of fuel. If you look at competitive salary increases, whatever, that's what they calculated. It took a city. To be able to increase every year to be able to be competitive with the cities around them. It was eight percent per year. So you can increase taxes seven point five percent and that was it. It was just done. So now they took that property tax cap. They basically bumped it back down to three and a half percent with some really weird caveats. That run through it. So now I'm going to, I want to, I want to give you a scenario. We pass this budget and a huge storm hits here. Devastates everything. What can we do the next year? Three point five percent, that's it. You know what three point five percent is in our budget? Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What are you going to fix with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? You can't do a thing. But what you can do is you can go to the taxpayers and you can convince them that you need to do it. How many people even, even if they know. That you need to do it are going to vote for a tax increase? Nobody. They're not going to do it. We see that all the time. The only time you ever see that work is in school bond election. I'd stop figuring that out. It does work in school bond elections. They get them through. Well, I have figured it out. It's because the voter turnout is so low. That's why school bond elections go through. But they put us, they put cities in a spot now with Senate Bill Two this year where we are going to be, I mean, we're going to be up against it every year. So I want you to think about, no, nevermind. I'm not, I'm not going to do that right now. I'm talking about that later. So I went to the council and said, look, this, you haven't done a tax increase of fourteen years. You need to do the eight percent this time. Because we're, we're up again. We, we haven't done it. We haven't fixed the things we should have fixed with it. We can get it one time now and that's it. And so we need to get it because when we hit that next. Cycle where we do this on sales tax, that eight percent is going to be gone in no time because it's, we're going to see a big enough drop on the other side. But until we can get those businesses built, we got to get started fixing. That's our way to get started fixing. Is that temporary increase in the eight percent until we get the sales tax built up. That gives us some of the money we need to do to do a bond. So we can get the tank fixed. We can get the wastewater treatment plant fixed. We can get those things fixed. So we recommended the, the proposed tax rate go to point five five zero seven six four. So what does that really mean? If your home, if the, the taxable value on your home is a hundred thousand dollars taxable value. It equates to about five dollars a month. So it's less than a Big Mac is what it's going to cost. If you have a home like mine, it's fifteen dollars a month. There's not very many homes in this town that it's going to be more than seven or eight dollars a month. For all those things we talked about, new fire trucks, water tanks that are fixed, wastewater treatment plant being fixed, all those things. We're going to get started on all those things. With a Big Mac every month for most people. That's all it takes. Average home value in Lamarck is about seventy-five thousand dollars. You know, it's three dollars and seventy-five cents a month on that house. Is what we're talking about on the property tax increase. Utility fund. I've never, speaking of never, I've never seen a town, city anywhere where commercial rates and homeowner and property right, regular utility. Residential, that's what I was looking for. Residential rates were the same. Guess what? They were here. Everybody was charged the same. We went back, Suzie and her group went through, did a whole tiered. Utility fund structure. Based on things on the way other cities do their utility funds. So the ba- the basic person, basic utility, basic person here in town is going to see about a two dollar and fifty cent a month increase on the utility bill. Businesses is going to see more than that. If you have huge water use, you're going to see more than that because your base rate is just barely going to go up that little bit. But then it's the big users that are going to pay more, which is the way it should be. If you have a residential, if you've got residential, you see your house and you're flushing toilets three times a day and cooking, boiling one pot of water. Why are you paying the same rate? As a business who's making money off of our water or as a motel who's running all that water? Why are you paying the same rate for your water? It shouldn't be. If you have a small yard and you're taking care of a small yard and you got your neighbor next door's got a swimming pool and they're emptying that thing out every three days. Why are you paying the same rate as them? And you're not enjoying that water the same way. So we went to the tiered structure. There were six entities that it hit pretty hard. And I'm going to go talk to them, but they were huge water users and that's why it hit them. The way that it did because they were using a significant amount of water. So that may serve two purposes. One, it may, it may. Push them to implement water conservation measures, which is going to help our use through Gulf Coast, which will keep our costs down. I, I, I think in the end, that's probably going to be a big part of what's going to happen with that. But if not, they need to pay for what they're, they're using. And then of course, the park user fee would also go on your utility bill. So. Five dollars a month on your taxes and probably about five dollars a month on your utility bill. Only difference you're going to see. You're going to see two new fire trucks run around town. You're going to see the, with the water tank, you're going to see the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant done. You're going to see two million dollars every fifteen years put into our parks. You're going to see nine lift stations. Chase, how many lift stations are you done? Um, you're gonna see nine lift stations. Chase, how many lift stations are you done? Nine, ten, eight. A number of lift stations redone. Um, you're gonna see drainage projects done in town, water lines, sewer lines fixed. Um, additional employees to help chase so that we can get to stuff faster. What am I missing? There's other stuff in there too. We'll get to the list here in a minute. So again, to recap, how would it affect you? Property tax increase to the proposed rate. An average home will pay five dollars a month more in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Utility rate increase, uh, an average home, so we talked about the base rates two fifty increase. Average home in the mark, when they look through all of it, the average increase is about three dollars and twenty cents and then the two dollar park fee. Uh, so you'll pay about ten dollars a month more. And of course, if you're senior, you're not paying your property taxes. You're exempt from half of that. What do we get for that? Two new fire trucks, rehab to the Gulf Greyhound Water Tower, wastewater treatment plant expansion, design and bond to construct Gulf County or Gulf Coast Water Authority, uh, water to meet our needs. Rehab with nine lift stations, rehab of the wastewater treatment plant headworks. That's the one I was talking about, supposed to have five pumps. We have one with two bypasses on it. Uh, rehab of the seventeen sixty four water intake. We're supposed to have three pumps there. We have one at a standby right now. Uh, renovation of city facilities up to and including potentially a, a new building for, a newly renovated building for the police department. A new vac truck, a front end loader, a boom truck and it's, and two skid steers for the wastewater or for the part, the public works guys. Uh, fifteen additional employees to better serve the citizens, drainage improvements, renovated parks and new amenities. I forty five expansion and beautification and branding project. That's another thing we didn't talk about as forty five goes through. Uh, we've got an agreement with, with uh, Texnot to do some branding on the bridges. So they'll say, this is Lamarck. Uh, welcome to Lamarck, things like that. It's gonna, it'll make it very inviting. Again, sales tax, that's what we're trying to do. Uh, and then there's more than that. Um, so for, for, for the little bit of increase that we're, that we're suggesting, that's everything that everybody's gonna get. That's our contract with the citizens. That this is what we need to do and that's where we're going. Is that it? Okay, any questions?
Okay, the property values have gone up thirty five percent in the past three to four years. So are you taking that into consideration on the tax revenue?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
That was built in the base budget last year.
Okay.
We didn't do it.
But you didn't?
No, we, that was, that's, that's the, 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 um, the valuation increases at the state. State worked with the tax districts to do that. We had, the cities had nothing to do with that.
Okay, but, but you're reaping the benefit.
Oh, there was, yeah, there was additional, there was additional revenue that came in for that on people that were under sixty five that were paying their taxes.
Right. Okay, but I beg to differ that seventy five thousand, are you talking about? Um, that's the value of what these houses are here in town?
That's the value that the study showed was about seventy five thousand, right, Alex?
From the?
For every, for every, every, every.
From the tax?
Average across the city is about seventy five thousand dollars a year.
Okay, because I really think that that's where our problem is. Because when we sell a house, it can be on the tax rolls for forty five thousand, but you go to sell it and it goes for seventy five or
Sure, and there's, and that's, and that's exactly, I think, why the legislature did what they did. There were a lot of properties out there that were three, four, five hundred thousand dollar properties and they were on the tax rolls at two hundred thousand. Or they were hundred thousand dollar properties and they're on the tax roll at fifty thousand. And I think that was the legislature's point was, okay, you're not even coming close to valuing these, right? We're gonna make you value them closer to what they're supposed to be.
So can you work with the tax uh appraisal district on that?
Now, you as a homeowner, you have the right to go in and challenge your valuation anytime. Well, not anytime. There's a set period every year where you have the right to go in and challenge it.
Oh, no, I, I've realized that, but I'm just saying that they could, you could make them go up in value as a city. Can y'all talk to her at all?
The legislature's the only one that can do that.
Well. I'm just worried about Lamarck has a stigma about it for several years. And if you have a tax rate that's higher than League City, Texas City, Galveston, it's matches, Galveston. Um, Friendswood is point five three. It's, school is rated like top five in the state.
Their average property value is probably about three, four hundred thousand too.
Okay, I'm just worried about trying to get people in here to buy because the taxes are so high and we don't have anything to offer them as far as amenities or schools like, say, Friendswood.
So it's kind of the chicken and the egg, right?
Right.
Gotta get one to get the other. We, if we don't do something on, on the, on that side, we will never have the funding to get the other side.
So you think that it will never be? Um, we're gonna take our chances and hope like heck we're gonna build it and they will come?
I wanna tell you this. I, I came here and I told the mayor and the city council when I came here. I didn't really want to, but I'm probably gonna end up working fifteen more years. I'm gonna put all fifteen of those years here. When I leave here, all that's gonna be built. Those tax, the, the sales tax that you see right now, we're gonna be three times what we take in, three at least times what we take in in sales tax per year.
It needs to be.
And you're, and all those rest of those properties are gonna be built and the tax value will probably be back down about thirty five or forty cents.
Because there's a lot of people that are gonna be taxed out of their homes.
And, and, and what you're talking about though, it's important to understand. Do you look at League City and you look at Texas City?
Right.
The reason that their tax rate is what it is is because, and they got in front of it. They made the investment in front of it. Those tax rates weren't like that when they got their cities built up. Their tax rates were high. And then they, as, as they got all that, you go to Webster, I mean, it was what, there's probably fifteen businesses for every home in Webster.
Sure.
Um, you know, they, they, they're, they're different monsters too. But they got in front of it and they built that infrastructure and they put those things in place to get those businesses to come. And then once they got them to come, they took it off on the back end. That's the only way you ever get to it. There was only really two, two, there's only really two tools that cities have to create revenue. But three, I kind of, then we're trying to get to number three. First one's annexation. Guess what? Legislature completely demolished your ability to do annexation and we don't really have any place to annex anyway. Uh, but if you were in an area where you still had, had annexation, they've almost completely got rid of your ability to do that this year as well. Second was property taxes and third is creating that economic growth to get to the sales tax. The only real one we have is to get to number three. We all have to buy into it and make an investment upfront to get to number three.
But are we gonna have to do tax abatements and stuff to give them to sweeten the pot to get them to come?
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, we, we have to look at each one individually. Um, I've done a tax abatement in my life. I'm not gonna sit here and, and, and act like I'm somebody who's completely against those because I think at the end, you have to look at the overall benefit. Um, sometimes you give a tax abatement on property because you're gonna get all that additional sales tax.
Sure.
It's like, okay, so yeah, we'll give you a, we'll give you twenty five percent of your, you know, we'll bait whatever. Or we'll build your, if, you know, something, we'll do something to entice you to come here. But I guarantee you, we're not gonna do things like what I've seen. I, I saw a city right outside of San Antonio trying to get a bucky's, twenty five years, no property tax, ten years, they're giving them all their sales tax back. I would never do anything like that. Um, and I don't think this council would even entertain anything like that either. That's not what we're trying to, we're trying to get bang for our buck now. And you get that bang for your buck. So yeah, sometimes you give the rabbit a carrot and let him get up to you and then, and sometimes you have to put a little carrot out there. But the reality is that piece of property is sitting there vacant right now. And we're getting, you know, nothing for that piece of property, but we can build that business on there and we can give them twenty five percent off their taxes for five years. Well, guess what? We're getting seventy five percent we weren't getting. Plus, we're getting all the sales tax. We're getting the extra people coming into town to shop at that business or do whatever, that now may also go to, to Kelly's or may go to another restaurant. Or may do something, we're making, you know, that we're bringing their dollars here instead of all of our dollars going there.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to get to is a point where we're keeping our dollars here.
Okay.
Suzie?
I'm just worried that you're gonna have someone that's looking to move down here, decide to go ahead and go to Friendswood instead of Lamarck. And I just feel, but hopefully I'm wrong, totally. I hope I'm wrong.
My plan is to prove you wrong, not in a mean way, in a good way.
I hope you do. All right. The other thing, the last thing is insurance. The driver that hit the truck, the, the fire truck, did they have insurance?
It did not, right? Yeah, we, our, our insurance, so here's the problem. You have a twenty eight year fire, twenty eight year old fire truck that gets totaled. To us, that fire truck might be worth the world. To insurance, it's worth fifty thousand dollars and that's what happened on this truck. It was so old that it depreciated so far that the claim paid out on it wasn't enough to really, the claim paid out, maybe enough to get the bumper put on it if we can ever get somebody to fix the problem underneath it.
Okay.
Unfortunately. That's the plan. That's what we're working on. We gotta get there.
Um, I'll, I will give you hats off for getting the council to go for this because I really think they've fought it for a long time to be able to do this. So I've hats off to you for doing that.
They were, they were excellent to work with. They, they, you know, they're very attentive. Um, they understand, I mean, they see this, you know, they see what's happening. They know where we need to go. You know, this, this direction we're going is not my direction, it's their direction. I just gave them a roadmap to get there.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Anybody else? You know, I want to point out one other thing that we didn't talk about. We're talking about, you know, because end of the day, as citizens, what you guys are as citizens, it's like, how does this affect me? That's what this whole thing is about, is how does this affect me? Um, it's what we've talked about. Yeah, you, one less cheeseburger a month because of your taxes and maybe one less um, Starbucks coffee when you drive up the road to cover the other part of it. But there's, there's, there's other sides of this. So we're talking about getting sales tax from here to here, which is gonna drive down those property taxes. Those two new fire trucks, what happens with those two new fire trucks? Anybody know? What's gonna, what do they all want to see when we get those two new fire trucks, Todd? And then what does that do? All right? Which helps us get what? ISO rating. Our ISO rating right now is a three. Two new trucks, new leadership, we get the ISO rating down to a two and then to a one, guess what happens to your homeowner's insurance? It drops. We don't put the new fire trucks in, we don't get a new chief, we don't do those things. And we go from a three to a four or a three to a five, what happens? They do that? All these things we're doing, all tied back, everything that we're doing ties back to some way to try to save everybody money. I mean, it doesn't look like it's an immediate saving of money. I get that. But what we're trying to do is get from point A to point B. And at point B, those savings start coming to the citizens. At point B, the insurance rates get better on your homeowner's insurance. Sales taxes go up and property tax rates have to go down by law. That's not a decision the council gets to make. That's set in the law. Every penny of, so, so if you go buy something at the store, two cents in sales tax, um, that's added on to what you buy goes to the city. Half a cent goes to economic development, the other cent and a half goes to the general fund. By law, when the city elected to take that, that, so, so originally it was one penny. Legislature said cities want one penny, they can charge one penny in sales tax for everything. So the cities all put in one penny. They came back, I think, four, five, six years later, I don't remember how it's, or maybe eight years later and said, okay, you can do another half cent, but if you elect to do that additional half cent, that half cent has to, has to impact property tax rates. Every time it goes up, your property tax collections have to go down proportionally. So the city's all said, wise choice. Everybody that buys something in this town doesn't live here in Lamarck, right? There's people that pass through that buy stuff at the convenience stores, whatever. So let's let somebody from somebody else pay some money in to reduce our property tax rates. So as that sales tax, when we, when we get the growth, that sales tax jumps, that one half cent by law automatically impacts your property tax rates every year. If we can get a huge jump, we, we can double that. It's a huge impact on your property tax rates. How many of you go out of store to buy groceries? Everybody does because it's not a grocery store, right? So all that other stuff you buy, if those, when you're out there doing all that too, when you stop at Target and you stop here and you stop there and you pay sales tax on all that. If that sales tax was being spent here, instead of there, what are you doing? You're driving your own property tax rates down. But we gotta get the infrastructure in place to get those businesses to come. So you have the opportunity to buy here. So I mean, you have opportunity to buy a lot of stuff here. But there are certain things you can't get here. We gotta get those things here so we can spend our money here and get other people. Because you know what happens in Texas City when you go shop in Texas City? That half a cent does drive their property tax rates down and it does it in League City and it does it in Webster and it does it every place else. And that's you spending your money to keep their property tax rates lower. We're working on it. We're working on it. And I know taxes are a hard thing to understand. And I appreciate those of you that came out tonight. I really appreciate you guys coming out. Uh, cause it shows you wanna learn, it shows you wanna see what's going on and I really appreciate that. You know, we're happy to answer, every director, we got everybody here. If you got a question, you're more than welcome to ask anybody you wanna ask them. Yes? Okay, so that's a really good question and I, I'm glad you asked that question. So wastewater treatment plant, the design feasibility study, design that we're looking after the wastewater treatment plant, that is a design that every bit of growth that we could have, it's like, we don't really have any place to grow. We have city limits. There's a few small areas that theoretically someday, I guess, could be annexed if they choose to be annexed now because you can't just go annex them like you used to. So we're looking at all, all potential development inside the city and the final plan on that wastewater treatment plant is for full growth. Um, we're doing it in phases because we're gonna phase it with the growth. Because we don't wanna build for growth that we wouldn't have. So the, 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 the plan that we have now for the wastewater treatment plant, we shouldn't be able to outgrow it unless we grow up. Now, if we get to the point where we start growing up, then, which will be way down the road. Uh, but if we got to that point, it would have to be looked at again, obviously. Um, and I think at that point, then you're looking at maybe, maybe when we get done with this one, this is one of the things I think we'll do. Because kind of what we talked about with that U of H property. Once we get that plant built to meet full growth, once we get Gulf Coast Water Authority uh, allocations to meet full growth, we probably need to build any additional that would come above that into impact fees. So that if somebody's moving in, a big company wants to move in, or something else wants to move in, they're paying for that and the citizens aren't paying for that. Uh, if there're gonna be an additional strain on the wastewater treatment plant, they should pay for that additional strain. If there're gonna be an additional strain on our water supply, they should pay for that additional strain on the water supply upfront. Uh, that's what impact fees are for. Well, you know, Chase and I have talked about this and I've talked about this with council. You know, once we get the lift stations fixed and we get the big issues done, then we're gonna start breaking those down year by year because, okay, so like, so we do the eight cent increase this year. Um, if we don't see an increase in sales tax next year, we'll see, you know, with the I forty five project, who knows? That eight cents is still in next year. So this isn't a one time thing. It's, it, it stays until we get the growth on the other side to push it back down. So it's not just in the one year that you have the additional five dollars a month. It's next year and the year after, and the year after too. Until the sales tax drives it back down to where a sales tax replaces it. Um, so you, we're looking at what we could fund this year. Are we talking the wastewater treatment plant? We're not paying for the full fourteen million out of five dollars a month for everybody. I mean, that's, there's no way. But in the bond, it, we'll have to do a bond to build it, but that will be the, the, the payment for the bond will come out of that money every year. But there's also other things we're paying for this year. One drainage project we're paying for, are there some other things where next year we can come back and say, okay, let's replace a mile of water lines. Let's replace a mile of wastewater lines. Let's, you know, let's whatever, you know, whatever we, to start, but we need to do it. That's why we're doing all the master plans. That's why the master plans are so important. There needs to be a plan that says, yeah, wastewater lines in this town, except for what we've done in the last, they're all junk. How do we get it all done? Um, and we, and that master plan says, okay, here's your main trunk lines. We start here. This is how much it costs to redo a mile of main trunk. We probably don't, what do we have? Probably ten miles of main trunk lines? Maybe a little bit more. Uh, and you start on the big ones and you start working your way back and, and, and over time, we'll get there. Didn't break overnight, we can't fix it overnight. You know, that's, that's the reality, but it's, but we gotta commit now to fixing it this year, next year, the year after, and the year after with what we're doing right now gives us the mechanism to be able to do that. Hope that makes sense. Yes, ma'am? If they agree. If they agree and they're not going to agree for what it costs them. That's, that, that's part of what we're trying. I guarantee you those cities that have the extra, they're holding it and they're holding it for a reason. They're holding it because down the road that becomes a high dollar commodity. Gulf Coast can't make them give up. Gulf Coast is not allowed to go to a city that has X and is only used in half. They're not allowed to go to them and say, you have to get part of it back. They cannot do that. They'll hold, they will hold it. I've seen this, the Western United States has been happening since eighteen twenty. They will hold it and it will become more and more and more and more and more valuable. And then at some point they won't sell it, they'll lease it. They will always hold ownership of it. They will lease it to you for five times what it costs them and they will get rich off of your city if you don't have enough to take care of yourself.
So if they're very impossible, they're specifically or anything similar or, you know, it's not like the top app to.
No, because right, right now they're actually, right now we're not in a drought. So they're allowing us to go over. It's not, we're not getting in trouble for. We're paying extra. We're not cut off. Um, that's why he came to us in the first place. He said, you know, y'all need to do something because if we hit drought again, you guys don't have any water. It's like, okay, so let's, what can we do? And that was when he told us about the, the seven millions that they, the seven million gallons a day they just got. And we gave, I, we sent him the letter that night. I mean, I sent the, he left. I went in my office, typed up the letter, said, we want another million a day and sent it to him. Um, so we're in line. So they're not going to, right now, we're not really behind the eight ball with them because we've asked to be put in line. So they know we're working, you know, they're, they're, we're waiting on them. They're not waiting on us to where before they were waiting on us. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable waiting on them because I know we've got what we need in place to be in a good spot when they make their decision. TCQ is a different story. We don't keep moving forward with them. They can get ugly. Been there, done that, don't ever want to do that again. They've been very good to work with. I, I mean, they've been great to work with, obviously. Most of the time, three years is way more than they wait around. But they know we're moving forward. They've seen what we're doing. They're comfortable. Same thing. They know we're, they're, we're good with them right now too. And we'll get there. Any other questions? Thank you guys for coming out. Really appreciate you guys coming out. Y'all have a good night.